...of the meeting minutes. Actually, that's part of the consent agenda. So, we've got items in the consent agenda. Item C, D, E, F, and G. Was staff going to present any of these items to us tonight?
I'll start a question. We did separate out F3.
F3 is separate.
First separate action. Everything else, I think it's straightforward.
Do I have a motion to approve the items in the consent agenda?
I motion that we approve the items in the consent agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion or comments? Scott, would you call the roll?
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. Heinz?
Yes.
Ms. Serini?
Yes.
Ms. Wright?
Yes.
So, item F3, the approval of the dumb waiter replacement bid at Noble Elementary. Can it be a smart waiter?
Good evening. I wish we could have that magic. I wanted to bring this forward tonight as an urgent necessity. We did speak with our attorney out of Columbus. A little history on the dumb waiter at Noble. It's been actually inactive for over a year. And it's used to get all the food, whether it's the milk deliveries every day or the hot carts that come in to feed our students, from the ground level up to like a floor and a half up into the cafeteria. When it's broken, we have to have extra manpower go and help the employees get that upstairs. We've been doing that for an awful long time. Went to an architect, had them develop the specs for us to go out to bid. It was actually put on the back burner because we had a couple other issues. The baseball fields and so on, I wanted to get out as early as possible. We finally did go out to bid. It's a specific date in my mind, it was about three weeks ago. And we received no bids. Matt Segona advised us at that time that we could do an addendum to the contract. And we posted that. And we waited one week. We raised the cost of it. After some further discussions, went from $50,000 to, I think it was $60,000. And received one bid. The one bid unfortunately was over 10% of the total architect's estimate, which requires us to not accept it. Talking with Matt, he agreed that we did good faith efforts. We advertised the way we were supposed to. And it is urgent that we get this. It's causing us extra costs and stuff to work around this issue. So, he said that we could move ahead with urgent necessity, foregoing any further advertising and awarding it to the contractor. $65,900. That's the total replacement of the existing dumb waiter. And some work around it once we tear it out.
Okay, so let's get a motion so we can talk about it. So, do I have a motion to...
A motion that we consider the replacement of the dumb waiter at Noble Elementary School.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Talk about it.
It's a big dollar amount for a... I mean, it sounds like a big dollar amount for a dumb waiter. I've never replaced a dumb waiter before though, so...
We've worked on it. In fact, my expert on staff is, happens to be the head custodian at the high school, Gary Kaiserman. And we are at a point where it can't... We wanted to remove it and weld it. And I sent our welder from the transportation department over. And he said he couldn't even weld it. It's beyond that. And it's not just the tracking, it's the shape of the cab inside. And it's from just the use for the years. People putting things in and out of it. It's out of square. And the equipment needs to be changed out. Or we manhandle it every day. Because the cafeteria is up on, it's like the second floor.
George, is this impacting the quality of... I mean, it's taking longer to get the food up there for the kids? Is the food cold now when they're getting it? Or it's not as...
No.
It's just the manpower to get it up there.
Right. One person cannot get it up by themselves. And at the time when it comes there, it was just the head custodian. So, we have to either have the person that's on the vehicle. If it's, frankly, if it's a woman, they can't help. At least the ones that we've had take the... Because these are routes that are awarded and bid on through transportation. The noon routes where they deliver the food. So, we can't stipulate who drives those delivery vehicles. So, if they're incapable of helping get that up there, then I have to get somebody else dispatched over. And this is a daily recurrence.
So, when you say, "These are our people that can't help get it up to us"?
They're our employees. I mean, they're our employees, right?
They're our employees? Is there a union negotiated agreement?
Well, they're bus drivers. I mean, they're... And bus drivers don't... They actually don't have a weight limit expectation in their description. Like the custodians have, they have to be capable of lifting 70 pounds. These individuals are over 70 pounds. So, the custodian can stand back and say, "I need help. If you don't give me help, I can't do it." The hot carts, you know, they're substantially heavier than 70 pounds. The milk crates aren't that bad, but...
Well, I'm glad that they asked for help.
Yeah, okay. So, help us... Okay, so I see, if it was me, I'd walk up a milk carton, okay? But today I'm healthy, knock on wood. Thank God for that. But... So, walk me through exactly what has to get carried up. You said a cart. Is this one of the carts that have all the food prep? You know, the food prepared?
So, they're the hot carts. They're small mobile units that are, I think, about this high. And they hold four trays. So, when they're prepared at, in this case, they're prepared at Wiley for Noble. They're prepared, they're put into those carts. They're loaded onto the back of a truck, which has a lift gate. So, it's rolled up on there. It's driven over to Noble, dropped, and the lift gate comes down and it rolls off into... There's an exterior access to like a mechanical room sort of thing. You open up that door and you go in and there's a dumb waiter access right there. You push it into the dumb waiter and I think it's two or three cars that go up. I'm not positive, but there's two or three cars that go up.
Okay, so these... So, this is hot stuff that they're moving?
Yes.
So, what happens if it spills on them or...
It's all bad.
Well, that's not good. I've not had that happen. So, we have not had any, anything, you know, anybody that has been hurt by doing this. Again, it's a... It's something that is just not... We take extra manpower that we shouldn't have to use. We have a... The only dumb waiter we have in the district is right here in this building where we use it to take books upstairs. Instead of individually taking a box or so they can load a few boxes onto the dumb waiter here and take it up. Wiley had one, but it was made inactive because we put an elevator in. But that one was one that we had to maintain up until we put an elevator in the building.
Is there an elevator at all in Noble?
No.
Yeah, I sympathize with you because I worked in a building that's almost 100 years old. And we have a dumb waiter. And with, when you, like supplies, if there's other supplies, you use a dumb waiter for that as well? Not, yeah.
I mean, we try to focus just on the food because it... There have been some things put under that we said, you know, we don't want to use it for garbage bags. Because then you're putting trash on a unit that takes extra cleaning that we don't want to have to do. And the trash bags aren't that heavy.
Well, say for instance, like kitchen supplies.
Oh, that would... If it was anything heavy, they would put on it and take it upstairs.
So, give me an idea of these four trays of food. I think of an auto sham. That's not the word I'm looking for. But it's like a, it's a hot, it's a machine that's designed to keep food hot.
Right. It's a device about... It's a little bit wider. It takes food trays. And if I'm not mistaken, it's four or five food trays are slid into that with whatever hot meal they're putting on it. Because we can't prepare the meals inside the school.
And you said it's in excess of 70 pounds?
I can get you the exact weight. I believe it is. It's in... I, in my better day, probably couldn't get it up. I said, "One, one, two, three, three flights of stairs."
Three flights of stairs?
Yes.
So, you really need two people to do it?
Definitely.
So, in order to feed the kids, we need to have the food delivered. We need to get the food to the kids. And in order to do that more safely, we really need this done.
Right.
This is sort of like owning a house and you have a hole in the roof. And you don't want to spend the money to fix the hole. But you know if you don't fix the hole, you're going to be wet. I mean, I don't, you know, I... At first blush, this is something that is an easy, easy, easy novote. I mean, why are we spending $60,000 on a dumb waiter? But as you sort of look and sort of unpack all this... I mean, okay, I'm worried from a liability and safety issue. And not even, I probably should be considering the health and welfare of our employees first. I mean, you know, what happens if something like this spills on them?
That's my consideration.
I mean, that is just like awful. And then you have the health and...
Still waiting, hurting their backs. And it's a workman's comp issue waiting to happen.
Yeah, and then, and we, you know, it's one thing to say, you know, it's one thing if you didn't know that there was this problem and this increased danger. We're well aware of the problem. We're well aware of the danger.
We have, yeah, now that we're aware of what's going on, we have no... I mean, I don't feel like we have a choice of...
I don't want people to get hurt.
Yeah, well, I don't want... I just know we're going to have community members up in arms that we're spending this and then trying to explain to them why it's necessary. And then, it's good to know the feedback of, "Well, we just can't get a better price." I mean, this is competitively bid.
This is, in fact, the company that I spoke with is our elevator maintenance company. And they are the ones that originally gave me a price that said, "Hey, if you want to do this, we can do it." But his price was over $50,000, so it had to be publicly bid. Now, we're paying more money because he had to bring in another general contractor to do some sheetrock work that, once they expose this unit, they have to actually go up into the wall. It's not, it's not a simple task. I mean, it sounds like a simple device, and it is. It's like a small elevator. The controls are not as technical as an elevator's controls. But if you were to see it and how the confined space that it's in, it's not an easy task now.
It's probably at least three stories. At least that's what I'm hearing. Three flights? Okay, not three stories, but...
It's two.
George, what's the age of it?
I...
Is it original equipment to the building?
It's probably not original to the building, but it's, it's old. I don't know the original age of it. I've been here 18 years and it's definitely older than that.
And we can expect it, if we repair this, to last quite a long time?
We're replacing it, so it will last... Yes, it should last the rest of our use of that building.
Okay.
And if, and it'll be under warranty, I'm assuming, for...
Right. We'll get the standard warranty, one year. And our elevator company has taken over anything that we've liked. Just like the elevator we put in next door at Wiley. Right now, that's under Tyson Krupp. They maintain it. But when it comes out of their warranty, we usually turn it over to the company that we use.
I see.
And you said there's how many carts that are carried up every day? Just one or did you say multiple ones?
It's multiple. And I hate to give you an, because I don't know off the top of my head, but...
Okay. And in addition to that, there's the milk cartons?
They're feeding a number of students in there. And again, there's, I think there's four trays per cart. I can share all that information with you.
Does this impact breakfast as well?
If they're bringing it for breakfast, it would. I just don't, I... Lunch is the one service that I know it affects.
Okay.
So, I get there's a sense of urgency with this. Is that...
It's been quite a while now that we've been, we've been trying to accommodate this with employees. And what really is a struggle is if I have to pull somebody off of somewhere else in the district, knowing I have to get them over to provide the help, that's a challenge. If the custodian himself is doing something that requires him to stay on it, whatever that may be, that's been a conflict. Because then the person that's dropping the food off standing there, what am I going to do? Because they usually wait till somebody comes down to take control of it. So, it's typically a systematic thing where they'll have the help, but it's not all the time.
Well, I'm looking at this. This is half the cost of a playground. And look at all the enjoyment that a community of kids get out of a playground. And for us to do a playground, that's a stretch. I don't, but I don't see, I don't see we have a choice. I mean, I think we need to think about our employees. We need to think about the safety of this issue. I think we need to think about the liability of this issue. What happens if the kids don't eat? This is a long-term investment in a building. So, this, although the number seems high now, you amortize that over 10 years?
I wouldn't be here in front of you if I didn't think you should do it.
I know that, George.
May I ask, what's the timetable for the, for the repair or the replacement?
Well, that's part of the issue. They have to work after hours. It's why this is a little bit higher than it should be. Because it has to be worked after hours because we're going to open it during school. They have to order the equipment. The equipment's six weeks out. They have to do demolition. This has to be done after hours. When we went out, we knew it was going to be a need for that.
I feel like I need to approve this. I mean, from my, for, for, for my vote, I'm very, very uncomfortable with the price. I'm very, very happy that you went through all the hurdles. I'm looking at this in my mind that we can amortize this over multiple years because it's going to be beneficial to the district for multiple years. I'm thinking about our employees. I don't want anybody to get hurt. I mean, I'm just trying to think of, you know, these big, heavy things that are hot going upstairs. I mean, we can't have our employees...
Yeah, and heaven forbid it spills on a child using the staircase at the same time.
I would, they wouldn't do that. I'm going to say they would not do that.
Did the accountability group look at this?
No.
No. Just to come up.
I think we need to get this done as soon as possible, which is why I would not want this delayed. I do think though, from a matter of due diligence and accountability, and I know it's retroactive, would you share it with your accountability?
I definitely, I plan on it. I want to update them on the permanent improvement expenditures and that this would be part of it.
Yeah, I mean, I think we need to have them weigh in on this.
This will come out of permanent improvement?
Yes.
Okay.
Are there any other... One of us is very lucky she doesn't have to vote tonight. Scott, would you call the roll? Mr. Heinz?
Yes.
Ms. Serini?
Yes.
Ms. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, George. We talk about something that's not going to cost us money now. So, we went through finance. So... Dr. Dixon?
All right. So, this evening, we have a presentation from the Heights School Foundation. So, we have Juliana Santur Johnson with us tonight. And you should be able to pull up your packet.
There we go.
Are you ready? Going to hear some wonderful news about what the foundation has been doing under her leadership. And as we go into year three, wow.
No.
Yeah.
I feel that way too. I can't believe it, actually. I'm going to start and end with saying thank you. I'm happy to tell you that my presentation is really about return on investment, not only investment. So, I'm glad to follow such a thorough conversation about how to spend district dollars. And I hope you'll feel that this, the return on investment that you've made in the Heights Schools Foundation has been very successful in many ways. So, believe it or not, we've only just finished our first full year as functioning as the Heights Schools Foundation. You, I'm sure, remember that we've been known originally, way back in the day, as an alumni association. And then, there was an Alumni Foundation. And eventually, those two merged. And for a long time, we were known as the Cleveland Heights High School Alumni Foundation. Thanks to the former passion and leadership of a former board member, Eric Silverman, and many other dedicated lay volunteers. The organization, over time, developed many traditions that we continue as the Heights Schools Foundation. And you will see as we go through our year in review together that the core of the alumni work that's been done for more than 30 years still shines through. It's just in a new, with a new lens and with a new sense of welcoming to make sure that there's room at the table for everyone who would like to be involved. So, when we think about alumni, we've broadened our lens just a little bit because we're, as the Heights Schools Foundation, we are not only an alumni association, but that is our anchor. And we don't want to forget that. And one important group of alumni for us are our amazing staff, people who are also graduates of our district. Here's just a few of them. We're a passionate bunch, in case you haven't noticed. And we're still thinking about how we can work together with staff people who are also alum. We call them the duo, dual enrolled in our minds. That's sort of our short term, the term of endearment. And then, we also have a group that we call the trifectas. Those are district employees who are Heights grads who also currently have children in the district. And the reason that we are trying to think of this group in different ways is because we feel that there's something really special when you work in the district that you graduated from. I know, I feel that. I'm from the great class of 1987. And I find that there is a certain passion in our alumni staff. And I think that's something we should continue to celebrate and investigate together. So, just to start that process, we wanted to mark the opening of Heights High with a photo of some of the district employees who are also alum. This is just probably less than a third. It's who could hear us as we were yelling, "Come out to the stairs." As we have opened Heights High, and we did that in partnership with you. And so, the foundation has been here with our volunteers and alum to celebrate the opening together in a lot of different ways. We had the one grand opening celebration where more than 4,000 community members, families, and alumni came through the building in just one day. But that was just one event. We've had thousands of visitors through the year celebrating the opening. And every single reunion that has taken place since the school is available to tour, has decided to come and tour the building. So, this is becoming an important tradition. We're helping reunion groups understand that they can come back and connect. And the stories that people tell as they walk through the hallways are simply hilarious and also extremely poignant. And we get great ideas for our magazine as we walk through the halls with alumni. I won't tell you the story about the Volkswagen bug that was unassembled and then reassembled in the clock tower. But I actually met one of the people involved with that prank from the 50s.
Allegedly involved.
Allegedly, because obviously that never happened. I mentioned that these reunions produce amazing stories. And we have learned to capture them and retell them in an even more impactful way. Thanks to our partnership with the communications department, where we're not afraid to think big, we decided that the longstanding alumni newsletter really just was fantastic for what it was. But what we really wanted was a magazine. And we had a brainstorming meeting where we brought our designer in. And everybody brought their favorite alumni magazines from all of our different universities. And that was how high we set the bar. We want something that's really going to tell our stories and that would meet the needs of the district, but also the needs of the foundation. Because we share so much in common. And we want to tell the same kinds of fantastic stories about current students, about current staff, about staff who served our district for 40 years. And now, people wonder where they are today. About our amazing alumni and all the things that they're doing around the world. So, we've published three issues so far. And we've settled on one each semester. And the next one will be issued in October. So, in general, it's fall and spring. This magazine has mailed to 16,000 alumni and has a digital reach of somewhere in the range of another 60,000. So, we also print physical copies to be available in the buildings and libraries and places around, around town. And we hope to continue to expand the physical reach and presence in the city in the coming year, in both cities. So, things that are familiar, well, we all know homecoming. We have it every year. We were reminiscing with a group of alum about what they remembered about their own homecoming weekend. And over the decades, they've all been different. But we all agreed that when you're opening a new high school, you sure ought to think pretty big. So, this led to us approaching the city and asking them to shut down Lee Road in rush hour Friday night in order to accommodate our high school parade. And they actually said yes. They've actually said yes again, too, to do it again for this fall. So, I'm happy to tell you that. So, this is what partnership looks like to me this weekend, when everybody is bringing something to the table and contributes something. So, we're the convener, but so many institutions have contributed to this weekend. I feel like I need to make it clear that this is a true partnership. We can't possibly claim credit for all the amazing things that happened in this weekend. So, it was all new. Last year, we started with a parade right down the business district, a great watch party that the foundation sponsored. Amazing participation from every school in the district. There must have been 1,000 people in that parade. I started to think there was, who would be left to watch it? There were so many people in it. It was fantastic, right? And collaboration with the athletics department. So, it's special announcements and shout-outs to alum in the arena watching the game, which was so fun for them. Those little touches make a huge difference in making a welcoming weekend. And we pitched the idea that this is a weekend to come home to. If you're planning to come back, first of all, Ohio's beautiful in October. And what a great weekend to come back. You're not fighting over holiday weekend travel. And there's a ton of exciting things going on. We had more than 40 local businesses offering specials, discounts and specials to anybody who showed up in a Tiger T-shirt or who mentioned the schools, which again, is just another, another piece of the partnership. Can't say enough about the Cleveland Heights Police Department, who managed many interesting moments over the weekend and were just fantastic. So, you get the idea when we talk about connecting into the community, bringing people together. In the end, thousands of people were connected to our homecoming weekend in a way that hasn't been done for a long time. And we're excited about building on that energy this October 12th and 13th. I hope you've marked your calendar for homecoming. It's hashtag #Hoco18, in case you were wondering.
I was wondering what the hashtag is.
I know you really did want to know that, Dan. This year, during our first year, we launched a brick paver pathway campaign. We wanted to make sure that there was a way for alumni to really feel connected to the renovation in a way that you'd be able to walk by and see. I thank you so much for the beautiful placement of this paver pathway around the flagpole in the front yard facing Cedar. I can't tell you how much alumni appreciate that. Whether you have donated to engrave your own brick or not, it's such a lovely place to stop. First of all, the view of the school is amazing. The front yard looks fantastic. But it's full of memories. They're fascinating to read. If you haven't had a chance to stop by, take a few moments and, and read about people's memories. There are shout-outs to teachers. They're remembering friendships. Couples who met at Heights High have marked the moment. Sibling groups, generations of Heights families documenting multiple generations of Heights attendees and so on. We've just installed, thanks to the help of Gary Kaiserman and the gang at the high school, we've just installed a round two. So, there's fresh bricks there that have been added. And the, you might notice there's still some blanks there, which we're also excited about. So, sometime in 2019, we'll let you know. So sometime in 2019, we'll let you know when that campaign will reopen. Our Golden Tigers. These are our alum who have been, who have already celebrated their 50th reunion. So we got this idea from one of our elder alum, who really wanted us to think about providing a multiple-year opportunity for older folks to get together. What we find is reunion planning groups age, people kind of just lose some momentum sometimes, and there isn't necessarily someone to plan a reunion, and it can be a lot of work. And so the idea is, we do a little bit of the heavy lifting and provide the venue and the meal planning and all of that, and everyone wants to come back to Heights High these days, so it's at Heights High. And this is the first year that we did it. We had about 75 people come together. We pulled yearbooks from every graduating year for the people who were attending so that they could look through them, and that was probably the highlight of the event, second only to the tour of the high school, of course. And we think that this event will grow each year. The event that I attended for a Cleveland-based high school that has done it now for 19 years had 800 people at their last event. So it grows by, and the planning committee told me they started with 50. So, and they just said each year it grew. So we have a planning committee working on this year's, it will be in November at the high school. So we've thought a lot about how we can connect to the district and to the staff, and we wanted to be a part of the theme of really lifting up and honoring excellence last year. And so inspired by that theme, we looked to popular culture, of course, and decided to do a Shark Tank pitch competition connected to a professional development day. And the idea was to provide real-life examples, people who have great ideas and who just need a little bit of funding to be able to do it. We love the opportunity grants concept that we started more than a year ago, because it allows teachers to have good ideas even if you miss the budget cycle. We don't want that to be the reason you can't do the great idea you learned about at your professional development day or at a conference or whatever. So the opportunity grants are available to staff year-round. They're typically under $500, and the pitch competition, Shark Tank, attracted 20 extremely brave educators and staff who quite literally got on the stage and pitched their ideas in front of a panel who voted yes or no. I'm happy to tell you that out of that competition and the conversations that happened in the days following, we awarded more than $10,000 in opportunity grants that were rewarding just really good ideas, and we plan to make that an annual tradition. Thank you. I said I'd say thank you at the beginning, at the end, but I have to say it in the middle, because you guys have found us some fantastic space for the district's historical archives, and we are so excited about it. It's on this campus, if you don't know, you just kind of walk through the bus garage there, and it, what better place than offices that have had their own history to tell? It was a bus driver's lounge, it was the coach's lounge.
Athletic department.
Athletics department, yes, athletic department. I love that the offices have their own history, which we'll work on documenting better than I'm doing right now. Right now, it looks like a warehouse, but don't be fooled, there are amazing things to be uncovered there, and we're really excited about what might be coming. We've thought about some of the historic funds that we have had the honor to care for, and one of them is the Holocaust Education Fund. This is a wonderful partnership that is led by our high school educator, Mark Sack, and we're the stewards of funds that support specifically Holocaust education. We really wanted to explore that, partly because of my own background. I teach Holocaust education in a synagogue setting, and so we had sort of a meeting of the minds in that way, and Mark and I share many connections in the Jewish community in this realm. And when we talked about how to ensure the legacy of Holocaust education at Heights, we felt that it would be very helpful to host an event. So we did that, in partnership with previous educators in Holocaust education who've taught at Heights over the years, with Mark really taking the lead, and then 12 different partners in the Jewish community came together to do this educational event that also served to be a fundraiser for that fund, to help continue that legacy. I'm happy to say that the same performing troupe would like to do the event again at Heights High next year, and we've just submitted a request for the space to secure that in April, so we're excited about that partnership just getting started and continuing into the future. Pancake breakfast, it's an oldie but a goodie, right? It's been around for a long time, more than two decades, and, you know, we just added some twists. We re-energized it. More than half of the people checking in told me they'd never come to a pancake breakfast before. Part of that is the excitement of getting to see the high school, part of it is just that we're raising our profile and we're doing different kinds of work, we're trying to be more welcoming, and we're reaching out to new groups of alum. So we had more than 350 people come through for pancakes, which is not a record for the event, but it's a record in the last 10 years. So that feels pretty good to sort of get back to some of the peak years that we had. I have to give a shout-out to AVI, who somehow turned my 200-person reservation into pancakes for 350 people. It was like miracle work. Hall of Fame, another longstanding tradition that continues. So part of what I wanted, the message I wanted you to hear tonight is that we honor the traditions that we inherited, we take them seriously, and we only want to just build on the base that's there, that's so positive, and make it even better. So that's what we tried to do as we rethought what would Hall of Fame look like today. So we tried a new model where we invited Hall of Fame members to spend a good part of the day of a Friday on the campus, meeting with different student groups in different ways, led around by an amazing team of high school students, and then to stay on for an award ceremony that was in the newly renovated auditorium that drew 500 people, and then followed by a private dinner and an open public event on Lee Road. So each one of those things was a little bit different than we've done it before, and together, I think it made an amazing day. I think we have a new model going forward for now, and the feedback was wonderful. I think it was a great experience for the Hall of Fame members themselves. It didn't hurt to have a couple NFL ringers in there. And it was exciting to have, you know, 500 people gathered to really hear what people say about their experiences. They're incredible, aren't they? And we've been taking, over the months, those little video snippets and sharing them, and they're, over and over again, the most popular things that we share. Hearing from successful alumni reflect on their experience is really powerful. So I taught you about bricks, and the Auditorium Memories Campaign, it has a similar feel. The idea is to, you know, leave your little mark on the high school, right? There's, I find that there's no end to the desire, for those of us who went through the school, to leave a mark. This is a sanctioned way to do that. And we'll be putting little metal plaques on the back of the chairs in the auditorium. This campaign has just launched, and it's raised already just under $10,000, and there's a lot of chairs, and so feel free to take your seat and furnish the future. We've just unveiled this campaign through a mailing, and we'll be placing the first round of plaques in time for homecoming. And of course, we continue a traditional scholarship. So this year and last year, we were able to award $15,000 in scholarships. We expect that to be the minimum going forward, and we did have new scholarships, were, you know, created this year, and we think a little bit of that will also happen each year. And so we are scholarship central, and anyone interested in creating that kind of legacy should feel free to reach out directly to me. And I wanted to end on just a few financial notes. I'm happy to tell you that in our first full year, we were under our expense budget, so it's always good to spend less, right? And we raised more than we had projected. So we raised just over $150,000, which is the highest in our history, and we were able to distribute back to the district just over $65,000. And as I mentioned, our scholarship amount was 15. We made, thanks to a very generous donor who we're writing a story about for the Fall Magazine, the band is really outfitted now in new uniforms, summer uniforms, and a wonderful place to display their awards. We were also able to make a significant gift to the choral music department, and then, as I mentioned, the opportunity grants. It's just a few of the highlights of our contribution. And I want to end it one more time and say thank you, because the investment that you are making, we are grateful for every day, in staffing and office space and the resources that we are able to share in terms of office machines and things like that, that make it possible for us to really focus on returning the dollars that we raised to the district. I also want to give a shout-out to my communications team, because something really good is happening back here down the hallway. When we come up with ideas like the magazine and an event that draws 4,000 people, I think we're really on to something, and there's a special energy that's coming out of that, and also in partnership with our family engagement specialists. So we're grateful for the team effort that's happening in the building that's really helping to make all this possible. So thank you. Happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
I don't want us to undermine, you know, to forget that leadership matters, too, and your leadership over this has been wonderful. Your vision and your thoughtfulness has led us to where we are. So I think it's the whole team with you and Scott and Lisa, you know, and this is right up Scott's alley, you know?
I've noticed.
Oh, my gosh, you know, so I think it creates innovation and creativity. I mean, just the different things that you're doing, that you test and keep pushing, and we're getting some great results. And I think it's good for the community, it's good for the organization to know that we're doing the right thing for the right reasons, and we're getting the right results.
Yeah, thank you for that, I appreciate it.
Juliana, are we sending the magazine to our elected officials in our cities? I would really like them to hear some of the great stories that are in those magazines, and I, what we often hear is, you know, when we meet with one of our elected officials and something, we mention something great, they go, "Wow, I didn't know that," so.
Isn't that the truth? I will make sure that all of our current elected officials in both cities are on the list. Thank you for mentioning that. I think, yes, but I will make sure that that happens. I couldn't agree more.
And I'd also like to make sure we include the elected officials who have an interest in Word 4A in South Euclid, so it'd be the two city council people at large.
Yes.
The mayor and the councilperson for 4A.
Absolutely, thank you for saying that.
So, a couple of things, you know, just going through this was, I just kept saying, "Wow." And what an enormous year. I'm struck by a couple of things. The Hall of Fame Night was such a magical evening, all of the different sub-events, if you will, that built into that evening. And one of the things that struck me in the acceptance speeches is how important the community is to these graduates, and it seemed that it was a thread woven in all of the speeches in one way or another, and I think that that evening put a real precise target on how important the cities of Cleveland Heights and University Heights and the area of South Euclid are, and how important an institution the schools are in the cities, and how important the cities are as institutions in the schools. People talked about growing up in the Heights, I think, more than they talked about the Heights schools, and I think that that's a really important and beautiful thing that I heard so many times. And I think that that is, that pride is being reflected in the fact that at least some of those speeches are now being shown on the websites of the individual cities, which is really great, that working together. And then on a much smaller but more specific thing, I was having dinner this past weekend on Lee Road and was talking to some folks who have not yet toured the high school, and yet are dying to tour the high school, and I didn't know, I didn't know how to tell, where do they find out when tours are?
Right. So we'll have more community tour options available this year, because I agree with you that, you know, there's still plenty of people who haven't had a chance to come through. In the short term, people are welcome just to reach out directly to me. I've been covering tours for the summer. Normally, Joy Henderson at the high school can handle those, or we partner together to make sure, and then we will make known community dates for sure. We know homecoming weekend, October 13th, we'll include an open house from 10 to 1:00. We'll also include a little "come by and get a hot dog and chips" kind of thing, so it should be really fun. So that'll be a great time to come and connect with other community members and grads, but we'll have other opportunities as well. We'll do also a December open house like we did last year, that was very popular. A few hundred people came through before the gospel choir concert and had cookies and cocoa afterwards, it was a lovely night. We'll do something very similar. Can I tell you one story in response to your story? I got a note today from a grad, a 1960, I believe, graduate who lives in Jerusalem, and she'll be traveling back to Cleveland in September, and the first thing she wants to do is visit Heights High.
Will we be doing events around the reopening of the middle schools?
Absolutely, thank you for saying that. So, lots to think about, right? So we'll have more talk about, by the way, thank you for your service, Dan.
Been enjoying it.
Dan's new to the Heights Schools Foundation Board, but really, not really new, six months in now, and from the second he started his first meeting, we, I looked over at Susan, our board chair, and we said, "It's kind of like he's always been here." So thank you for that. Yes, we've just started to think, do some big thinking around the opening of the middle school, so more to come on that, yeah.
So, this is great.
Thank you.
I mean, it's good to see you starting to gain some traction.
Yes.
And take advantage of a lot of the traditional, the things of tradition that you're honoring. You know, Beverly and I got on this board right at the time when the existing Alumni Foundation was essentially being.
Reshaped.
Yeah, reshaped into this. And, you know, the board at that time who envisioned this change had some pretty high expectations, and I think you're on track for that. But sort of in honoring their wish, what I'd love to be able to see in future years is really how you're starting to gain some traction. I see, for example, the opportunity grants, I mean, what a great idea. I'd love to be able to compare this year's to next year, because we know it's going to get better. You know, one of the things that we were stuck with, with the existing foundation, you know, prior to your tenure and prior to the new reorganization, is it was performing admirably. We had great leaders there, but it was kind of stalled. It wasn't, it didn't have any of the infrastructure to take off and grow. And we've looked at some of the neighboring districts, and we use that as a model, you know, such as Sheik or another districts, to create what we have, because we really need to honor the foundation. We need, I mean, we have all this, these great, you know, legacies in the trifecta, and Dan, I think you're part of that trifecta team, aren't you?
Perhaps. Probably so.
Yeah, I mean, it's great, but it'd be great to see that scholarship number grow. I mean, there's people out there in the community that were very active in the old foundation, and of course, they're active sort of in their old way and the way it was done, and, you know, that was fine. And, you know, that was fine. And, you know, we need to show them how we can just do more home runs and get more saturation, and think new ways of doing things, which you're doing. I mean, these are all successes. I mean, you look at that magazine, and it's like, wow. I mean, when Jody says the other elected officials needed, well, I mean, I've got a list here. I mean, realtors, I mean, you know, prospective families. And I know a lot of these people sort of touch this kind of stuff. And that's why gluing this with your department is just phenomenal. I mean, it just is really, it's good work. But I think as far as the expectation goes, I mean, we do want to see more scholarships. We want to see more involvement. The guy that was sitting next to me in the stone oven that was sort of looking over my shoulder as I was going over the board packet, and he saw that, he goes, well, what's that? I go, well, you know, it's the high school foundation. You went to Heights, you know what all this is about. Oh, we don't have a, we don't really have a foundation? And he just, he just lives down the street. No clue. So, we have our work cut out for us.
No doubt.
So, we just need to find, find ways of reaching out and just grow this thing. So, thank you.
Okay.
Any thoughts?
Good job.
You still have more things on your agenda.
All right. So, we have our third and final readings of some policies, so.
Dr. Lombardo, if you want to come up?
Can I shut this or no?
Yeah.
Oh. Yeah, thanks. All right. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Today, we have three groups of policies that we're going to be reading tonight. The first group, Group A, there are seven policies, and you've seen these. This is the third and final reading. So, the board will be taking action on Group A, which are seven policies. So, that would be the first order of business, is to make a motion to accept the Group A.
Let's just move forward. Do I have a motion to accept Group A?
I motion that we accept Group A.
I have a second.
I second.
We've seen this before. We've asked lots of questions about it. Are there any other remaining questions on this one?
No, I appreciate your diligence in seeking the information to answer the questions that we had.
Excellent. Thank you.
I know we're probably going to vote on this real quick, but there's a lot of work.
For sure.
That was put down to get this done. So, Scott, would you call the roll?
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. Heinz?
Yes.
Ms. Serene?
Yes.
Ms. Wright?
Yes.
Okay. And the next part of this process, just so you know, is, once they are approved, I send those on to Neola. They format them, and then they'll be uploaded on the website or on Board Docs. It usually takes four to six weeks for that. Okay? Group B has 15 policies. You'll see in our timeline today is a second reading of those policies, and there's 15 of those. I can entertain any questions that you might have on the 15. Again, this is the second reading for Group B.
Yeah, I think if we have any other questions, we should get them in writing and just present those.
That'd be great. That's fine. Great. You'll see that on September 4th, the third and final reading for Group B will be up for the board, okay? And the new group has three policies in it. That's Group C. This will be the first reading, and you do see in the schedule when the second and third reading ends. But the three policies is 2271 College Credit Plus, 2370 Educational Options, and 2464 Gifted Education and Identification. And again, this is the first reading for those.
Jody, did your, you're sitting on the policy committee. Was this, were these three brought up in your, in your meetings at all?
Yeah, we went through, what we did was, we looked at them. We had split out in groups to review the policies for all the appropriate people, and then we came back together and talked about what things had changed in each one. And I believe that was documented on the cover sheet that we were working on, Paul. So, Paul could provide that if he wanted to see exactly what we were changing on each one.
Well, what I'm most interested in, so my question is regarding the gifted.
Mm-hmm.
And your role in the gifted task force.
Yep.
And just seeing how, and I'm not going to put you on the spot, so.
Right.
In time for next, the next reading of this.
Mm-hmm.
Can we have a short discussion about how this impacts, this policy impacts what was discussed with the, with the gifted task force?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, a lot of what was done in this policy was to bring it in line with changes in state guidelines that had taken effect in, towards the end of last year. So, one of the, I can give you one example, was the previous state guidelines required you to have a certain number of minutes of gifted education for subject that a student had tested gifted in. And the state had changed that from a minute requirement to a percent of content. So, it allowed the gifted education program to do a little bit different things, like before, you could not do push-in services into a classroom with gifted. It had to be separate. Now, because it's percent of content and not percent of minutes, it allows, and Toya Robinson could explain this far better than I can, but it allows additional children to actually take advantage of gifted services when it's pushed into the classroom, because then every child in the classroom is getting the benefit of that versus a child being pulled out and having a separate minute component. So, there actually were some good things in the changes that came out of the state. I know there were some disappointing things, too, as far as changing the instruments that were used to identify gifted. Some of the ones that we particularly liked because they were, instruments that did not have bias in them, have been taken out. And so, I know Toya was very upset about that. But, so, I mean, there were some good things that we've adjusted the policy for, and, you know, there were some things that frankly, we have to follow the state guidelines, but we didn't think that that was in our students' best interest in some of those, but we had to update the policy accordingly. Does that give you a quick, like, update of some of the things?
Well, my concern is, this is such a polarizing issue with many of our families. I mean, there's, there's many that feel that it's sort of like decentralize, centralize. I mean, some people feel the pullouts are harmful, some people think that we should do it the other way around. And it's very polarizing, and they're both right. And that's what's wrong. I mean, that's, that's what's troubling for me. And it's, you know, how can we find what's best for an individual child, where one way is clearly better for one child, but the other child that you're next to, the other way is better?
Right.
So, it's very difficult.
And that is one of the things that the state has mandated now, is that you have to provide, provide a continuum of services, meaning you can't just do it one way. So, you can't just, I mean, you can, but you will lose points on the state report card. But they, they request districts who want to provide gifted services to offer a continuum. So, that's why now we have done things where we do have self-contained, but we also do still have pullout programs. It's why the gifted task force added the pets program to K through 2. So, children who aren't even, every child in the district K through 2 has some exposure to gifted programming that we didn't have before, because we only started gifted programming at grade 3 and 4.
Right.
And even some of the things that we, we as the gifted education task force were looking at to provide services to high school students, because currently, we were only providing services from 3rd grade to 8th grade. You got to 12th grade, and we got to high school, and there were no services. And so, now we were able to add some of those back in. And the things I particularly liked were adding it for children, you know, K through 2, who didn't have any, and it's providing more services for all the children. And then, the ones that went to a percentage component instead of the minute component, because like I said, it allowed every child in that class to benefit, not just the kids who've tested gifted who then get pulled out.
Excellent. Thanks, Seth.
So, would you like me to prepare another report, or does that satisfy your question?
No. We should do that again sometime.
We should actually have, we should have Toya come in. She could talk about this far better than I can, but.
And you'll notice the policy was released in June 2017, so the group had this policy for a year to look at it and work with it.
Yeah, and that was actually one of the ones that I was involved with, and I know there were many notes I wrote, you know, Toya, please take a look at this. Toya, please look at this.
Okay, so for this third set, any other?
All right. And we will reconvene the Policy Review Committee coming up this year, and as more updates happen, we'll be bringing those forward. Okay?
Sounds good.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul.
And I think the last thing I have under this report, just to remind people that new calendars.
Yes.
Excited about these. And speaking of our communications department again, so this year, Scott Wortman designed this, so we didn't have to go out and get a design with someone else. He did it himself, and it's very nice. I think it's actually nicer than the ones in the past. So, thank you, Scott. Another great publication.
Great work. Thank you.
The last two days, I've had opportunity to take my administrative team on a retreat. So, we spent two days at Arcasia Park. And just in case the board members here, we had today, two hours, we had a little scavenger hunt, in which part of the teams, we were at Arcasia Reserve and at Beechwood Mall. So, just in case you hear about administrators with Tiger Nation shirts on that were asked, you know, asked to leave the malls because they can't have scavenger hunts, that was us.
So, a little police activity with you.
Yeah, you know, and it was the two guards were actually hyped. They said, we're Heights High grads. We hate to do this, but there are no scavenger hunts allowed in the mall. But what the two days did for us, I believe, you know, when we talk about this culture of excellence and making sure that we are one team, I believe that the team, the 40 of us, got even closer, learning about each other, working together. It was two days of play, where we were doing puzzles and scavenger hunts, and just really working together as a team across the district building, central office. And we want to be able to go and start the year off that teachers see that we're empowered, we know how to utilize our teachers best, and know that it's not top-down, but it's across the lines, and, not across the lines, but we are reaching across the lines, or erasing the lines, maybe that's a better term, and working more together collectively. So, it's been a great two days. We have a couple more retreats. We have one in the morning with our summit team. But I think the start of the school year always energizes me and energizes the team, kind of puts in perspective the work that we have ahead. I'm excited about that. And then, the last thing, and I know some of my colleagues may talk about this, too, is graduation tonight. 12 graduates in summer graduation. And I tweeted some pictures out, so you may, guys want to follow me on Twitter. But, nice job getting out of the high school. We got 12 students through in summer school. And again, the work never ends. And it's amazing, we were in the mall, and we met a teacher who was, I think she taught, graduated in 1960, and she told stories. I mean, they saw all of us while these, I mean, people were waving, people were stopping, we were singing in the food court as part of our scavenger hunt we had to do. But it was wonderful when people kept saying, oh, my gosh, you guys are from Cleveland Heights, to see that many people in the mall, recognize, and be excited for us. And I'm standing myself, where are your kids? What school are they attending? But it was good. People respect our brand. They respect who we are. And to get that and feel that today is what we are about. So, I hope our team, you know, get in those buildings, reach across, and show that we are one Tiger Nation. And in order for us to continue this culture of excellence, we have to work together. And I think we're on that road to doing that. So, that's it for my report.
Treasures Report. The only thing that I have to mention at this point, you'll see, there's no forecast to be approved tonight, but we will be bringing it to you on the 21st. We've had several conversations with the county, and we'll go into that in some detail, about the sex annual reappraisal, the results of that, and how they are going to affect our collections and inside millage, also the Kaiser Settlement and some other things. So, I think we finally have all the information we need to have as good as a forecast as we could possibly have at this point in time. So, we'll be bringing that to you on the 21st for your approval with some further explanation.
Will you have a new five-year forecast at that point?
Yes, that's, that's what we'll be bringing. Absolutely, yes.
So, the board president report, I have a couple of things. I think the biggest is, and we sort of, we didn't have a meeting last month, except for the special meeting where we discussed the middle school project. But we had another retreat, and as part of that retreat, we discussed a lot of the things that we wanted to see happen next year, which included new lay committees, and some expectations at looking at our facilities, things like childcare. Are we doing that centralized or decentralized? How are we going to be handling our elementary schools? You know, where do we sit with the middle schools? So, basically threw a bunch of balls in the air, no decisions, just doing a lot of research right now. And those research, you know, the items of those, those things that Dr. Dixon and her team is working on will be brought back in a series of work sessions for us over the next, over the next year. And I'm sort of anxious to see where that's going to go. So, in addition, oh, as also part of that conversation, we wanted to make sure that the community was reaching out to us as a board. Sometimes we get flooded by a lot of special interest requests, but sometimes we just don't hear general feedback. And we have limited amount of time, like in our board agenda, where we allow for public comment. We don't get a lot. We know there's lots of chatter out there. We know there's tons of chatter on these sites like Nextdoor. We want people to come to us with this information, so we can respond. Now, whether that is in these kinds of meetings, whether or not we find ways, I mean, for example, one of the things we looked at is in the work session, can we have public comment? Well, we've got some sunshine law noticing issues by allowing that. So, we're looking for other avenues. So, we're looking for ideas from the community and how they can better communicate with us in expressing their concerns. So, give us your feedback. Finally, and this is something that was brought to our attention by Dan, there's a board workshop regarding negotiating skills and how to work with your staff, such as the teachers' unions. And the board has basically sat back and had staff do a lot of this type of work. We, as a board, are going to take a much more active role in learning and understanding how to make sure we are working the best we can possibly work with our, with our staff. We had a phenomenal event at the end of last year where we honored teachers. We need to do more of that kind of stuff. We need to understand what makes them tick. They need to understand more about what makes us tick. And the Ohio School Board Association has some workshops that can, we think that could help us figure this out. So, Dr. Dixon and I were speaking today. There is a workshop that's coming up in the.
September 7.
September 7. And Carolina will be getting more information to all of us about that. But I think that's something we all need to attend, and better understand how other school districts work, work together. I have, and I know you come from Chardon, one of my, my good friends just retired from Chardon, and he was sort of caught in a situation where there was the shooting in Chardon. There was a very, very big disconnect between the Chardon teachers and their board, and they did a great job figuring out a way of working together. I just want to make sure when we're working with our staff, we are all one team, as opposed to a separate team. And I don't know if that'll equate to altering the culture of our enterprise, but I think we just need to take a more active stance in how, and how all this works together. And where this is going to take us, I have no idea. It may, it may lead nowhere, but it also may lead to some great opportunities where we find better ways to work with our staff. So, that's, that's what's going on. So, we have a couple other agenda items. So we have a couple other agenda items, which include board committee reports. It's been a pretty quiet summer. Do we have anything to report?
You know, I think it's just worth mentioning that the Bond Accountability Commission has been mentioned. We met on, well, we meet again next week on the 15th. And we toured the middle schools on July 20th, just to get a sort of a firsthand update on those renovations. Was really thrilled to do that, walking those halls and seeing, wow, what a major undertaking this is. The middle schools, I think, have almost gotten framed in the community as these are just sort of washing the windows and painting the walls. And it is anything but that. Boy, when you walk through these buildings and you see that the ceilings throughout, I don't think that there's a ceiling left in either building, and the same thing goes for the floors. And a great deal of thought is being put into recreating learning environments that is, it's a very inspirational moment to go in and watch this process. So again, Scott put together a couple of wonderful videos that have been shared out to give folks a sense of where we are at the moment. And we're going to be doing that more regularly. As I mentioned once at a previous meeting, the BAC has decided to meet more regularly. And we are going to be visiting the buildings more regularly so that we can give people a sense of what's happening in those buildings. These renovations deserve more credit, I think, than we, myself included, have been giving them. And I think that when the community sees more, they'll become more and more excited about these new learning spaces coming online. And the other thing that I just wanted to mention is that I was invited this past week to participate in a rebranding effort that the city of Cleveland Heights is putting on. And so I participated in a focus group. Scott was invited as well. And I just wanted to mention it because I think that it is, it's a really good step in making sure that the city is presenting itself in a very intentional way. And they're beginning by learning from the community, how the community views the city itself and what the community's desires for that rebranding are. So it's very early stages, but I just wanted to mention that I was pleased to be involved in that and I was grateful for Scott for attending as well.
Any other thoughts in that category? Do we have any unfinished business? Business, correspondence and announcements? Do I have a motion to go into executive session to discuss the purpose of considering the employment dismissal, discipline, demotion, or compensation of an employee or official of the school district?
So motion?
Second.
I second.
Call the roll.
Ms. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. Heinz?
Yes.
Ms. Sereni?
Yes.
Okay, after the executive session, we are going to adjourn the meeting. So there will be no other items we're talking about. Okay, thank you, everybody.